Felicia or Mark, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Just testing out the mics. Thank you.
Yep, very clear. Thanks.
Derek, Jason, can you hear me?
Sure can. Gotcha.
Great, thank you. All right, good.
At least on this end.
Mark, Felicia, Derek and Jason are all on Zoom. Hey, Jason, can you hear me as well? I don't know if you can hear me.
There we go. Yeah, all right. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. We're good to go.
Good.
Well, so she, we partnered with the city in Travel Southern Oregon and applied a joint application for rare applicant, rare? You were rare?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like a great, I mean, this is my first time working directly with a rare. We've had, the city has had them before, but. So she's working directly to TBA, but the application is a partnership. And it's a, like a destination strategic plan that she's working on. And it's going to focus on arts and culture and also bicycle trails and, you know, just kind of honing in on.
I'm Anna, you're Anna, right? Yeah.
Reasons coming.
You're one end, right? You're one, you're one.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm two, and I think whether that's a difference or not, I don't know.
Hi, Anna, how you doing? I do. Yeah.
We don't have our. She's online. Everyone up there.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the meeting up. At, I don't even know what time it is now. Thank you, 6:30. And we're gonna call roll. And do you need us to call roll for its conference, please? Yes. Okay.
Chair Riley?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hazel?
Here.
Commissioner Tomato?
Here.
Commissioner Volkart?
Here.
And Commissioner Clark?
Here.
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 Here. Okay. So, following the planning commission agenda. Yeah. Anyway, so you want to tell us what's going on?
Yes, I have a few staff items, just to get you guys up to speed on the planning commission. We've had a couple missed meetings here, so. Currently finishing up a staff report on a lot split at 101 Gaminus Drive. In the staff report page right now, I've not approved. There's also a pre-application that was submitted for 240 Suncrest Road. That was for a preschool, which in our code would be a type three conventional youth permit. So the meeting will occur in early November, the pre-application meeting, of which Rowan and I will meet with the applicants. And then when they submit the application, we'll get the CEP process started. So then hopefully moving forward in meeting with the planning commission sometime, either later at the end of this year or early next year. Another pre-application was submitted, actually today, for 615 Talat Avenue. That is for a rebuild of a multifamily complex that was burned in the Alameda fire. And then, just to give you guys, like I said, just to get up to speed, since we missed a couple applications through here. There was a lot split for a minor partition at 104 Wagner Streets. That was MLP 2024004. There's also a a site plan review for 618 South Pacific Highway. That is item or file number SPR 2024004, for a warehouse building addition. There currently is a warehouse there which was approved through a site planner view back in 2020. This is, was reviewed for an additional warehouse building out there. And then another site planner view was approved for 600 South Pacific Highway. And that is for affordable housing, which will be 13 duplexes.
Where is that?
600 South Pacific Highway. It would be 13 duplex units. And then additionally, there were two final flats that were approved, one for 310 Lithia Avenue, that's for a lot split. That was approved September 4th. And then another one for 123 Gaminus that was approved on September 2nd. And just to kind of get you guys up to speed on some of the things that we have. Having after this one before the end of the year, hopefully, in terms of long range planning projects and other projects in the pipeline. We have, which we had last week, we went over some of the FEMA implementation. We have another meeting about pretty hog. And that's just with staff, but we will be implementing, another meeting here shortly. We haven't set down an initial date. Rowan and I will get together on that one, so that will be coming in the future. And then we also have the we will be setting up a a second citizens advisory committee sometime shortly in the next month or so. As well as trying to set up another meeting to go over the lineup and figuring with that. So I guess that is in the pipeline. And then we also have, and hopefully we can get this scheduled on December 10th, and that would be for the Mass Timber Code Amendments with DLCD and the consultant. So just giving you a rundown on some of the planning project pipeline.
Except FEMA, what FEMA maybe it's about? The thing that came before half a year ago about the re-planting stuff.
Yeah, it has, I don't know what the other meeting was for, but this is implementation of additional measures that we have to take per FEMA standards, and this has to do with the dangerous species act.
Oh.
So there's the implementation we have to move forward with. And we have to decide whether we want to move forward with a model code or some other option where applicants would have to go through additional table or potentially to get approval in the pipeline. So we'll, we'll have more of a discussion at a later date if I have information on it as well.
And the rail road feasibility that that was, that's not going to happen even for sure in November?
Tentatively, they, the consultant just emailed me and said he wants to get something hopefully set up sometime in November. But I haven't set down a date. So I don't know if we wanted to get that set up for potentially the November 26th meeting. But we can reconvene on the dates to that one.
But, but before it's for that, they could be needing with the advisory board.
Right, correct, yeah.
And do you know when that's going to be?
I don't. We haven't set up for a date yet, yet.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question about that as well? So is the advisory board gonna make a recommendation for the planning commission?
Not that I'm aware of, no. It's mostly going to be the consultant's findings in terms of how feasible the study will be in terms of cost, along with the different options. Based on the available areas where the railroad district might be feasible. So there's like, there's three different options, but I'm not going to go into that because we can go into that at a later date, but.
But, but the advisory board is advisory to staff, right? That's what I'm, I'm hearing. I'm hearing that. I think that's what it was called, was set up, and that's why there was no point in that stuff. Okay.
All right, could I just follow up? So, so that meaning, that advisory meeting with staff is not a public meeting, is what I understand.
All right.
Is it a public meeting?
We were going to set it up as a public meeting.
Okay.
So they could be more input.
We're the government. It's all public.
No, I mean, it's advisor to staff. It's not necessarily. Well, if it's public, I'm happy. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, because the first, the first meeting that we had, we did set it up for the public as well, so we're just going to run the same course with the second one. So it'll be staff members, the advisory committee members of the public, and there's one consultant themselves, and Josh from DLCD. Gary? Oh, yeah, sorry. Let me introduce. So this is Rowan Fairfield. She works for Rogue Valley Council of Governments as a planner. She is on contract with the City of Talent to help me out in some of the long range planning projects. Very valuable, actually, thank you. I appreciate her help. I really do.
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're the same Rowan who's going to help us with the three pathways? For the, that's, I thought I knew that. Okay, wonderful. Thank you for being here.
But Rowan, Rowan's not our planner for this. Thanks, Nick. That was, that's great.
No problem. Yeah, we, there was a quite a little time gap, so I wanted to at least fill in some of the gaps on that one.
I don't know if I could speak for the entire planning commission, but some of us are being utilized and kind of.
Yeah, and the reason, I mean, partly, obviously, the reason for that was we had a couple canceled meetings and all. But another reason for that is we haven't had any big projects coming for some reason, so it's been a little bit of a dry spell. But it seemed like we're getting a few of them going. Yeah.
So now, if we have, we don't have any minutes, we do not have public members that want to talk. And
Great. Hi, I'm Nikki Hart Brinkley. I'm with Green Top Planning Development and Research. I am your contractor. Yes? All right. Are we good to go? Awesome, thank you. So, thank you again for, for having me here. I am contracted to conduct your residential buildable lands inventory. And tonight, I'm, I'm going to go over kind of where we've been, where we're at, and what our options are moving forward. A lot of you were present for the meeting in June, where we, we took a pretty deep dive into what a buildable lands inventory is. And so I'll be going over that fairly quickly this evening, but I'm always happy to answer questions and, and I can be reached. So if there are lingering questions about the process itself, I am easy to reach and I'd be glad to, you know, have a more one-on-one if, if somebody is here who did not attend that meeting and has some in-depth follow-up questions. So the goal today is to review the final buildable lands inventory for, for your residential lands. And to present you with some options for moving forward. Today, you can choose to adopt this residential buildable lands inventory. It's, it's not a requirement. The grant is through DLCD that has provided the funding for this project. And making a vote on that tonight, I, I think moves the process forward. But it doesn't freeze this buildable lands inventory in time, because what we're working towards is to update your housing capacity analysis. And this is, I've described this before as a building block for that process, and that is very much true. And so what you can do tonight is, is decide to adopt what we have and then direct staff to start a comprehensive plan amendment. And this would be then voted on for adoption as a component of your housing capacity analysis. And through that process, we'd have another opportunity to take a look and freshen things up. Because especially as we're still seeing recovery take place, not at the speed that it was, you know, a couple of years ago. But, you know, the fresher this can be, the better, and we're still seeing recovery happen. And so just know that even if you do choose to adopt this buildable lands inventory this evening, there will be more opportunity to go into a deeper dive again, open it up for public comment and freshen it up before it becomes part of your comprehensive plan amendment. So with that, just going over some milestones. We had, we, we kicked this off in February of this year. I finished off the draft, the buildable lands inventory. And then we started in with some meetings with a stakeholder workshop in March, a public open house later in March, and a joint city council, and I apologize, I put that right. A public open house in March, and then Joint City Council and Planning Committee meeting. That was June 25th. I spent my birthday with you that night. And here we are with the final buildable lands inventory. Now, there, there's been open public comment. There was a survey posted to this website. And so everything that you'll see tonight incorporates the feedback that I received that I could incorporate into this process. And so just real quickly going over again what a buildable lands inventory is. The residential buildable land inventory aims to establish current conditions within the city and measure how much buildable lands exist within a city. It provides a snapshot of how much development a city currently has and what development can take place given existing zoning, comp plan designations, environmental constraints, and other developmental, development considerations. So the need for an updated buildable lands inventory the past few years have brought a lot of change to talent. And so in preparation for a housing capacity analysis, formerly known as housing needs analysis, we want to get this residential buildable lands inventory in place so that we can, can update the HCA later on. This allows us a chance to take a look at the whole big picture, all of the land within talent, and really see what's going on as a whole. But it also, what I really like about the OARs that, that guide this process is that it allows us to do this pretty quickly. So if you're a city the size of Medford or Bend or, or Salem, you can use these rules to, to quickly look over all of your buildable lands and, and get a pretty good and clear picture about what you're looking at. But in a city the size of talent, I really enjoy working in small towns because we have the time and we have the capacity and we have the interest from leadership to take a look parcel by parcel, to see what's really going on. And the rules allow for that kind of examination. So it's kind of this two-part thing where I go in and I kind of do the GIS magic and the math, but then we can go back and we can take a closer look. So this is a process I've, I've enjoyed doing several times before this here in Jackson County. And, and it's something I've, I've enjoyed doing for the city. So current conditions, we, we take a look at what the zoning is, what the comp plan is. And typically, we would use the comprehensive plan designations to say what is and is not residential land. But because of just some things about the comprehensive plan designations that make that a little bit tricky, the rules also allow for us to use zoning as well. So anywhere inside of the city limits, I've used zoning to identify residential lands. And then we move into looking at environmental and development constraints. Now that we know where housing is and is going to be, we can look at the things that constrain development in lands. And, and this is laid out very clearly in the rules that govern this process. Floodways, the, and the 1% annual chance flood hazard, wetlands inventories, setbacks from wetlands and riparian setbacks, as well as 25% or greater contiguous area slopes. So this is something that I, I look at, I, I. So this is something that I look at, I create all of this data, and I put it all together in one large GIS feature, and I take that immediately out from anything that's buildable. And you'll notice, of course, you know, we've got, of course, you know, neighborhoods that are fully within these, you know, red constrained areas. That doesn't necessarily mean that development can't happen there, but we do have, you know, some, that's okay. We do have some areas in talent that are, you know, fully constrained as far as these rules go, but where we know that there are neighborhoods. And so even though, you know, like this neighborhood here is all in red, you know, I've gone in and corrected for that and made sure that we're accounting for the lands that are clearly still buildable there. And this page goes into, you know, exactly what those constraints are and how each of those looks like. And I can, you know, answer questions about how those are developed in more detail if needed. So back in June, I said, okay, you know, we've done all this. We've taken a look at each and every property. We've looked at what homes are currently present on each property. And then we do some very generalized math that the OAR allows us to do. It says, okay, if you've got an acre and you have half of that acre constrained by environmental constraints and you have one house on it, you have one more house still buildable on that land because we take this quarter acre kind of safe harbor and we say a quarter acre is big enough to build a house, to put your driveway in there, to put a garage, and to have, you know, the basic things that you need in order to have a house. Now, that's a fairly big lot. I know I don't live on a quarter acre, just under. And it's actually quite a bit of land, but that is the safe harbor for what's considered buildable for a single-family unit. So we take all of that out. We look at what's developed, what just has nothing else available, what is partially vacant, and that means there's something on it, but there's still land available. And so I calculate what land is still buildable after all of the other deductions are taken. And then what's fully vacant. So what on there is completely vacant, hasn't been built on yet and can be developed fully. There's also some undevelopable portions that, you know, they are zoned residential, but for a number of reasons, they're considered undevelopable because they're just tiny slices of land that are, you know, close to roadways, things like that. There's also exempt areas, like there are, well, talent middle school and elementary school. Those are actually zoned for residential use. But of course, they're public uses. So we take that out as well. Those are exempt from further consideration as are certain types of open space and private roads. And so you'll see those on there as well. So at this point, this is what you all saw in June. And all of the updates that I have done since then, you know, absorb any of the feedback that I've had as well as the rebuilding that has happened between February and today or more earlier in October when I finished up the final build of the lands. And so, and I'll get into the numbers and what has changed a little bit here, but not much has changed. The, you know, the building that has happened has been on a lot of, you know, these smaller lots. So, you know, we've updated to reflect that rebuilding, but it's not moving the needle much. You don't suddenly have 100 acres, you know, less of buildable lands. It really has stayed very similar to where it was the last time you saw it with just a few adjustments to incorporate that feedback and the rebuilding. And so the final buildable lands status interactive map is the same as you saw last time. It's just a little bit updated. And so you'll see things like there was like a multifamily. Let me see if I've got this one right. A multifamily development that's further along in the permitting process. And so at this point, I can say, you know, I had it as vacant prior because it's something that burned and it wasn't far enough along in the permitting process for me to comfortably say, okay, this is making, you know, measurable, you know, immediate future kind of progress towards rebuilding. Now it's further along, and so I've marked it as developed. Is there a building there that people are living in? No, but the progress that is reflected in your permitting data tells me that by the time this moves towards an HCA, this is probably going to be well underway towards a rebuilding, and we don't want to count it as vacant. Not a lot changed in the numbers. So again, we're looking at, you know, the tax lots by land use classification, the available lands that are vacant and partially vacant, and how that is differentiated between your low, medium, and high density. All of this really has not moved too much. So prior to the update back in June, I had this at 102.1 acres of partially vacant land. And back in June, I had 13.8 acres of vacant land. So now we're at 12.1. So not a lot has changed in between June and now. You still are looking at most of your partially vacant developable acres within the railroad district. Again, this process does not permit me, it's not within the scope of this work to deem lands that are within the UGB as undevelopable based on infrastructure constraints. So that would not be something that would be appropriate to do within a residential buildable lands inventory. It does become part of a larger UGB amendment process. If you do have lands that are infrastructure constrained, that does become part of that process. But for this component, it's not part of the process to look at infrastructure on this scale. And so, you know, again, nothing has changed that is that significant between June and now. Again, this evening, you have the opportunity to decide what to do next. There's not, you know, there's no harm in not adopting this. There's no harm in adopting this. It's up to you to decide what message you want to send about the work that has been done. But there's no major consequence for not acting on adoption tonight or not. This inventory will be delivered to DLCD by December 31st. At this point, because the window has closed for, you know, for me incorporating feedback and then presenting it to you again, this evening isn't really a time for feedback on specific properties. It's really a matter of, you know, kind of talking about where we've been, where we're at, and what you would like to do next. And so at this point, I'd like to open up the floor for questions, comments.
Okay. Let's start with, we're going to start with the people on Zoom.
We can't hear you guys. You've gone silent. Are you speaking into a mic?
Can you hear any of the mics?
I can hear you. I can hear you clearly, Madam Mayor.
No, we couldn't hear you clearly before.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Were you able to hear the presentation?
Yeah, I heard Nikki fine.
Do you hear me?
Yep, you're lower, but I can hear you.
Okay. Do you have a question, Commissioner Volkart?
I do. I have a couple of questions. And it's not revolving around specific properties, although there's, and I may have asked this before, Nikki, I'm curious about how, and maybe it comes into the road. You talked about specific road, undevelopable, developable lands around roads. How do you capture right-of-way restrictions on privately-owned land? Or do you, I guess? And I'm just curious about that just because on the corner of Bain and South Second, it's a, the right-of-way is undevelopable, but captures a large portion of the parcel of my property there. So I'm curious about that.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the way that tax lots are created in Jackson County, anything that is not a tax lot is considered right-of-way? So that's kind of the first level of, you know, taking out right-of-way from from what we measure. But as you know, there's all of this additional space that is not accounted for because, you know, you can have a lot of your yard taken up. And in some cases, like from what you're saying, your own personal property, there are other restrictions on your property that aren't necessarily readily apparent from, you know, a sweeping GIS analysis. And so part of the way that we account for that is with the, that quarter acre of safe harbor. That includes those kinds of, you know, utility things, things that account for public right-of-way and might constrain what's buildable on a particular piece of property. And, you know, anytime we're doing an analysis like this, the hope is that, you know, we'll hear back from property owners who know that they have, you know, special deed restrictions and things like that, things that aren't necessarily doable for every parcel within a city. It would take a lot more work and become kind of a manageable bear of a project to look into, you know, deed restrictions on every property. That's not something that is readily available in a GIS format. And so the ideal situation is to have property owners find their property and say, oh, you know what? She's got my property as partially developed, but, or partially vacant, but I know that I've got, you know, some type of a covenant, some type of a deed restriction, a utility easement, these types of things that make the rest of my property completely undevelopable. And so that's kind of the hope is to hear back, you know, parcel by parcel from folks. And I didn't, I didn't see much of that in the responses. There was only one person who responded about a particular property. And they had, they had a question about why, you know, both parts of their property was, you know, considered vacant. One was considered vacant, the other was developed. But under the rules, it was considered that way. So unfortunately, I didn't hear back from a lot of folks about that type of thing, but that's absolutely something that could be captured when it's reviewed, you know, ahead of a comprehensive plan amendment. Really good question.
Well, I, I'm sorry. I apologize for not recalling the specifics of the safe harbor. Or are you talking about the riparian or is it safe harbor on?
No, the.
On the lot itself?
Yeah, so safe harbor, it's, so for every, let's say you've got an acre property and you have a one, you know, single-family unit on that property. If you have no other constraints, then I consider, you know, according to the rules, that you have three quarters of an acre that is developable. Because we take that quarter of an acre and we say, you know, quarter of an acre is about what you need to kind of account for from a very, very, you know, high-level perspective. You know, where your fence is going to go, where you're going to have, you know, some sidewalk that's not going to be usable, where, you know, you're going to put your house and your garage and all of the accoutrements that come with developing out a single property. So we consider a quarter of an acre the minimum for what is needed for development. And there are some caveats to that because, like I was saying earlier, you know, my particular land that I live on is under a quarter of an acre. And we have plenty of examples in talent where you've got, you know, a tenth of an acre and things like this. And if we were looking at, you know, fresh land, we might not consider that buildable, but we know that we're going to rebuild on those properties. And so I have included those as well.
I do recall all of you saying all of that the first time. I'm sorry for making you repeat that. Yeah, but I appreciate that. I guess I was getting caught up. You know, most of the area I'm looking at is considered developed anyway. And so it just, it just struck me as just what's going uncapped, uncaptured there, even though it's developed, it doesn't really matter. It's sort of moot because, you know, I think of ADU development and and that sort of thing, but that's not the lens we're looking through and we're just looking at the land itself. So I get that. And I'll save my riparian question as a follow-up to somebody else's question. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Volkart, if you have a question, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I'll just follow that. And thanks. Thanks for explaining that, Nikki. The other question I have is I know we have the constraint maps. You know, I'm looking at the old BLI and the riparian, the wetland and stream setback that's mapped out in the old BLI. And I'm just, I'm trying to understand. I mean, obviously, you can't build within that firm setback zone. Why is that, is that considered undevelopable as well? And I looked on the map. I'm trying to, I'm just looking at a recent project the Planning Commission tackled on Wagner Creek, right behind the Cummins Building. And there's a wet, there's a compensatory mitigated wetland back there. And on your map, it doesn't show up. I'm trying to, I don't think it shows up as anything on there. And so I'm just trying to understand the status of an area like that, how it works with, can it be considered undevelopable? Or is it just wetland and stream setback, et cetera?
Sure. You used a word earlier that I'm gonna use in this because it's exactly right. You said through the lens of. And so what is developable in terms of the buildable lands inventory looks a lot different than what is buildable when it goes through a whole, you know, land review process. Now, the piece of property that you're talking about behind Cummins and that I believe you're talking about the wetlands that is immediately to the west that is captured in the adopted local wetlands inventory. I remember there's a little bit of a question as to whether or not the local wetlands inventory has that located correctly. So that little piece right there is considered undevelopable from the lens of the residential buildable lands inventory. Now, whether or not that goes through, you know, the planning process. the planning process and is deemed undevelopable, that's a, it's just a different, different process, different lens. And so one of the things that, that I think your question brings up is something that I had talked about in June, but, but I'll mention again here because I think it's a really important point, is that nothing that I say is undevelopable within the context of the buildable lands inventory has an impact on a land use process. So if you want to build on something, you're always going to come in and you're going to talk to Nick and you're going to talk to Rowan and you're going to say, can I build here or not? And they're going to put you through a process that really does not have a lot to do with, with the buildable lands inventory process that I have created here. This is created, you know, through those OARs. There's some really prescriptive kind of analysis that, that I do for this process, but it's not always reflective of how that actually plays out in the real world when you come into the front counter at the city.
So let me just follow it. And this will be my last question, I think. And so I understand that. And so my question is, but doesn't the more undevelopable land that talent have, isn't that, doesn't that information feed DLCD's assessment of just how constrained we may be, or our own, I guess, self-assessment? I mean, obviously, it doesn't matter what you do down at community development, you can't put your footprint in the stream or within the setback. There's nothing you can do to change that, I don't think. And so are, are we shorting our, I guess my question is just, are we shorting ourselves by not, by it not being called undevelopable? Is it reflecting more potential development that isn't actually there, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at?
Sure. So I, I think if, if I can echo this back to make sure I understand. So the question is, if we are kind of taking this, you know, very broad brush and saying, this is not buildable because, you know, we followed the, the, you know, constraints rules and, and it's kind of created this brush that maybe is too broad, are we constraining ourselves in any way from, from what we can or cannot develop? Is that, is that an accurate reflection of your question?
Yes. And, and, and I'll just add, because I know that this data is what the HNA or Housing Needs, I'm sorry, not Analysis, Capacity, Housing Capacity Analysis is going to rely on to say, you're, you're over here and you're under here and therefore, you know, it's going to be used to argue for zoning changes or different things. So it's not, I, I just, I realized that the way the data is interpreted here is going to feed the rest of the process, I guess. And so, so that, that kind of goes to the heart of both of those questions, you know, that I started with, with the right-of-way limitations and then also the, just the, the riparian in this situation is being undevelopable. So, yeah, I think you've got it, though.
Yeah, yeah. And so for, in terms of how this fits into a housing capacity analysis, this is that, that broad brush kind of, you know, looking at just residential lands, looking at the, you know, constraints as they're laid out by the OAR rules. But the housing capacity analysis is going to do a few really interesting things. First, it's going to also look at your commercial lands. And so we're going to be able to bring in things that we, we weren't able to examine here because the residential buildable lands inventory is pretty prescriptive and it's pretty laid out. We are only looking at things that are currently comp-planned or zoned residential. But we're going to be able to take a much closer look at what lands are actually available. There's a lot of opportunity for, you know, building residential in commercial and, and industrial, whether through a rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment, or through, you know, the, the building, what is allowed in commercial right now as it, as it is zoned commercial. So we're going to be able to look at a lot more than, than just the residential buildable lands inventory. We're also going to be able to look at things like ADUs. Because you mentioned earlier, you know, a lot of the things that, that this deems completely developed, we know that, that you can tuck an ADU into the backyard of a lot of these places. And in fact, Nick and Rowan and I just went through an interesting exercise with regards to your, your transportation model, the transportation model that is run when, you know, there's something really big built and ODOT says, hey, you know, we, we really need to know about, you know, what, how this is going to impact traffic. One of the things that we do every so often is we update all of the, the residential information that feeds that model. And what we found was that we needed to sprinkle an awful lot of ADUs across talent in order to meet your capacity for the next 25 years. So that'll be good news to you is that we, we did feel that, you know, talent has a lot of capacity for, for continued ADU building and that, and that there's, you know, room for that throughout the city. And that's something that, you know, that the housing capacity analysis is going to examine a lot closer. And I feel like I had a number three that I was going to say, but now I've forgotten it because I got into talking about and getting excited about ADUs. So I've forgotten number three, but if I remember what it was.
Well, let me, let me ask you, Nikki, will the housing capacity analysis be, but isn't it relying only, I mean, isn't it hamstrung? I don't want to say hamstrung. Isn't it restricted? Or I don't know what, how to say it. But by the, the information that the BLI is feeding it, right? I mean, so if we don't capture now the fact that right-of-way might actually be limiting, I, I have a feeling that right-of-way is very limiting in there. And maybe it's captured by safe harbor. Maybe it doesn't, you know, it all floats out in the end. I don't know. I have no idea. You, you would have a better idea. But, but are we, are we not limiting ourselves with the best decision-making by not having, you know, true, what I would just call like a, a more pinpoint, accurate account of what is, maybe, maybe it's too fine of a point, but, or too fine of an effort, but aren't we limiting ourselves that way to some degree?
Yeah, I, I, I see your concern. And, and you make a valid point in that, of course, we want to go into this knowing as much as we can about each and every property and what's, what's truly buildable and what is not. What is going to shake out in terms of how the BLI informs the HCA? You're absolutely right. You know, a lot of what the HCA is going to talk about is going to be based on the results of the buildable lands inventory, but it's not going to constrain further discussion about what is actually buildable, you know, in a particular parcel. The type of kind of parcel-by-parcel analysis that would be fantastic to do, but also impossible to do, would be to go parcel-by-parcel and do all of these, you know, measurements like fence setbacks and, you know, right-of-way and, you know, utility access and, and all of these kinds of things that the buildable lands inventory just really is not designed to answer that level of question. Because, you know, in talent, this is a little more manageable. I've done this in, in Jacksonville and in, in Shady Cove as well. And in Eagle Point, you know, the bigger the city, the more difficult it becomes to, you know, to do a parcel-by-parcel analysis. And while you can get in pretty close and you can, you can ask folks to provide comment about their particular properties, it becomes a kind of an insurmountable project, something that just isn't achievable to go parcel-by-parcel and do a complete site analysis, as if you were going, you know, to come into Nick and say, okay, you know, I've, I've done my, you know, my setback analysis from my fences and I've, you know, put in my sidewalk and that kind of thing. The buildable lands inventory just is not intended to get to that fine of a detail because we just never would get them done. Is it ideal? Absolutely. But are you going to be dangerously constrained in your HCA because of the results of the BLI? I don't think so.
I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. We're going to move on. Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hazel, are you there?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
And Commissioner Clark?
No, thank you.
Hey. Commissioner Shapiro? Commissioner DeMato? Okay, I have a couple of questions. Would there be any benefit to, to this process? And I know we can't do it for this one this time, but in the future, if, if we did go back and rezone, develop land to how it was built out, like we have Oak Valley down here that's called High Density, and it's all single-family. So it seems like to me things like that, and that's not the only one. That's not the only example. It, would it help, would it help us get more housing if our zones reflected what was actually on the ground?
So that will be a really good question for, for the HCA process to go in. And I know I keep saying, I keep hunting it up the, up the road, whoever you select to do that work. But, but that's something that will be carefully examined during the HCA because especially ahead of looking at any changes to your UGB, one thing that we're going to have to look at really closely is what is the current use on your land? And that's something that I actually built into the data was I started to do those calculations about, okay, what's the, what's the density here right now? So if, you know, you've got an acre property and it's, you know, got only one house on it, what is the current density for every parcel in talent? And I actually started to do all that because I know it'll make it easier for whoever comes along to do your HCA to look at the actual density right now and see if the zoning and the comprehensive plan designation are an accurate reflection of what is happening on the ground. And then see where there are opportunities to upzone, to increase density, if there are those opportunities. And if that would be a positive thing to do, is that something that the city wants to see? Would it be a benefit in one particular place or not? Where are those opportunities? Because before you make big changes to an urban growth boundary, you want to make sure that you're using what you already have to its full capacity. And so that's something that that HCA is, again, going to examine really closely.
Okay, thanks. And how much, you said there was a, a small adjustment, just a small adjustment to from last time. Yes.
Yeah.
But so, but that included the, the, what has not been rebuilt from the fire, right?
So that's been tricky. That has been tricky because that's not something that a buildable lands inventory is really built to, you know, accommodate is this massive reconstruction of, of a town after a disaster. And so that was something that was, you know, a little bit tricky during this process was how do we handle those types of recovery things? Because normally you do this and not much changes in the, you know, few months that, that it takes to go through, you know, the public process and, and become adopted or, or move along its way. And so that's something that, you know, I've, I've talked to Nick about, I talked to Kristen about before, was how, how do we kind of cut off these, you know, these rebuilding things and say, yes, this is rebuilt, no, it's not rebuilt. And so we came up with these strategies to say, okay, if you've got a land partition that's going on, and, and we can see that in, in the, the land use permitting data, that's a really good indication that development, reconstruction, rebuilding is imminent on that property. If you have a permit in process, you're coming into see Nick for a pre-app, you've got some building permits that are, you know, being reviewed, that too is a really good indication that that's an imminent rebuild. And so that's the kind of thing that I've tried really hard to take a close look at and say, okay, this is, this seems to be moving forward. I'm going to make that fully developed because I can see that even though there's not a house rebuilt there, that is very much in the process. And so we've had to, to use, you know, discretion in trying to ensure that that reflects accurate rebuilding, but that's been the process for that.
So i- if you had counted every, just as like assumed hypothetically, that everything was going to get rebuilt to whatever is allowed at this time, would that have changed the outcome very much?
Not much, not much. I think when you, when we look at the, the final buildable lands status interactive map, and that's taken a minute to load. But what we see, you know, what we know, I, I don't have the, the Alameda Fire perimeter in here or the, the damage assessment data. But we know that, you know, a lot of the rebuilding, that green here, those are a handful of things that are remaining to be rebuilt in that neighborhood that were destroyed. And, you know, there's, there's maybe a handful of things over here, but it's not, not a lot, not enough to really move the needle. You know, when we're talking about a city the size of talent, five acres really isn't a lot. It's not a lot when you're talking about accommodating, you know, growth of your population for the next, you know, 14 to 20 years. And so, yeah, you know, cumulatively, you want to try to, you know, make this as accurate as possible in terms of the rebuild. But overall, it, it's just not going to move the needle that much.
Okay. By the needle, you mean, when, when we get the housing, the HCA? What's the C for again?
Housing Capacity Analysis. It was the Housing Needs Analysis, now it's Housing Capacity.
I have a hard time changing things. Okay, okay. So Ellen, Counselor Panama Riff?
Thanks. Madam Chair. So I have a couple of questions. When is, is it, just to understand how the building, buildable lands inventory feeds into the housing capacity analysis that we've been talking about? Is it an oversimplification? If I think of building lands, it's basically acreage. As we move into housing capacity, I'm thinking more about units. I'm thinking about density. And I'm thinking about commercial and all of that.
Absolutely.
I, I like to oversimplify things for my brain.
No, that, that makes complete sense to me. Yeah, absolutely. You have that right.
That helps a lot. The other question, I, I have two more. One is about, so we talked about people rebuilding, we talked about refinement. And you said, before we make this incorporated, this into our comprehensive plan, we'll be able to do refinements. So wondering about, after that point, is there a schedule for refinements that we can do? Or do we just kind of say, okay, we're done with building lands inventory, we're working on the housing capacity analysis and any refinements that we need to do, we can do it in that document? How should we think about this process going forward?
Yes, at some point, you do have to kind of freeze this in time. This became frozen in time for me, I think on the 11th of October. I said, okay, I could just, I can't make any more changes after this. I have to cut this off so that I can incorporate it all in and get ready for this meeting. So, yeah, at some point, you do have to freeze your data in time so that you can have that snapshot. When things come up later, like, oh, well, that, that land isn't available anymore, that was purchased, or that was annexed, or whatever the case is, whatever the change is, you will at least have some record. Oh, well, the, the lands inventory we finalized in, you know, March of '25, and that happened in April of '25. in April of '25, and the HCA wasn't adopted until November of '25. You'll be able to, to see that. I don't see that many additional changes happening over the next year. I mean, we'll have a little bit of fill-in. Not a lot changed, you know, between February and October. It was a matter of, you know, a couple of acres. So not a lot changed. And so I don't think you should be too concerned about the fact that it will be frozen in time. Like you said, we'll be moving into looking at capacity and looking at density and seeing what you have available, what more you can absorb, and what changes you can make to accommodate additional capacity.
Thank you. That's helpful. And this leads to my last question, if I can. Is that, you know, we think about this in terms of moving into TA4 and TA5? And whether we, you know, we can justify that with population growth and, and what's available as far as fill-in doing that. So, so that, I think that's why we're watching and wanting to be careful.
Oh, absolutely.
About, about these numbers because, because there is some really great housing opportunities there. So I see TA1 in there as well, and that is exempt, and I read that, correctly, that big gray rectangle there?
Yeah, so that's in your UGB now, and it is exempt because it's public use. Yep.
Okay, and then it just last one. Is in the housing capacity analysis, I'd been reading a little bit about it, but I haven't been keeping a really big track. Is that also going to look at affordability of housing?
Yes, because it will look at the mix of things that are projected for needs. It'll look at community goals and will be able to incorporate any new things, you know, you had said there's a new development, that's affordable housing. We'll be taking a look at all of that and looking at affordable housing goals. And if you do, you know, a housing production strategy, that all kind of gets housed under the capacity analysis. Just a building block. I know, it's a big one, but yeah.
Counselor Byers, you have some questions?
Not yet. Thank you. I'm okay. No? May I?
Uh, Mayor. I don't know if you, if the council wants to act on this tonight. Counselor Panama-Riff?
Oh, well, I was gonna, if you were gonna ask us, I was gonna ask you. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm, I'm comfortable moving to, the decision that we're being asked to make tonight, as I understand it, is whether we intend to adopt. And the actual adoption will be at a future meeting. Do I understand that? Okay. So I'm, I'm comfortable nominating automation in favor of intention to adopt tonight if other people are.
Sorry? I'm going to turn this meeting over to the mayor then because we're only advisory and we can't vote on this, so.
Yeah, and I feel a little uncomfortable with this particular motion. I, I actually think that we're skipping the step of asking if the commission for a recommendation. And so I, I'm not sure why it's the, why, why we have a motion for an intention to adopt. I, I'm sure there was some thought to that, and I'd like to hear what it is, but it seems a little out of step. Do you want to add? Thank you. Yeah. No, don't apologize. That clarifies everything. So I think that the council would be seeking a recommendation from the commission. Am I wrong, council? Okay.
Let the record show there was head shaking. But he shook like in the same. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Please, Commissioner Volkart.
Yeah, I, I'm a little confused because it sounds like this goes to DLCD regardless. It almost seems like adoption, I don't know if I'd call it performative, but it doesn't sound necessary, that's for sure. Is that the case for the council as well? And then I guess my question is, is the HCA, does it have to, it does have to be adopted, does it not? Eventually?
Sure. So the buildable lands inventory, the final data does get delivered to DLCD by the end of the year. And this will happen regardless if, if you choose to make a motion on this or not. This is a, a grant funded project from DLCD and delivery of the results regardless of your decision tonight, it, it will be delivered to DLCD. You can, uh, vote to, well, let me back up. You can make a recommendation to council that it be adopted. This doesn't have any impact on your comprehensive plan, nor does it have any impact on your current housing needs analysis. You will still need to decide if you would like to direct staff to initiate a housing capacity analysis and a comprehensive plan amendment. You can vote on adopting it to the comprehensive plan amendment at, as an element at that time, but that is not happening tonight.
Can I make some clarifying points?
Sure.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Hector, Gary, and staff. So it would be a council decision to direct staff? And so that would come to the council? I would imagine that this adoption or non-adoption will come to the council with a recommendation or without one? So that the council can make a decision. But I would hope that we would get a recommendation one way or the other from the, from the, from the commission. So all, everything but the recommendation is in the purview of the council, if I'm correct. And so really, all we'd be seeking tonight is a recommendation, or certainly the commission can choose not to make a recommendation. They can also choose to rec, not recommend it. But all of this, all of this will come to the council. Anyway.
Commissioner DiMatto?
I'd like to make a motion that planning commission may adopt this, that building
We wouldn't be adopting, we would be recommending.
We would be recommending. We would be recommending this. We would be recommending the building land inventory.
Or adoption.
The building land inventory.
Or adoption.
For adoption. To the council. All those words.
Okay. Commissioner DiMatto said all the words. And, and she wants to go ahead and move this forward to the city council. Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay. I don't feel like I can vote for that because this is, this is a lot of information that I just got. And, and it's probably perfect, but I just, I haven't had time to look at it, and I want to look at it. So that's my discussion. Okay, any further discussion?
I'll let it comment.
I've been at two meetings, but so I, I felt I had more than the situation and.
Commissioner Volkart, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I originally thought, it's funny because I thought the HNA that contains all the buildable lands inventory information was actually part of the BLI. I realize now it's much more of a data focused thing. I, I try, I did try to access the finable, the final BLI status interactive and couldn't get it to work, but I understand it hasn't changed much. That said, I, I, I know the council likes to have recommendations, but because this comes to the, in this situation, because it's coming to the council regardless, and adoption is simply performative, I, I think that's established in this case. I, I just would, I'm going to vote against the motion just because of the performative nature. You guys know me well enough to know, I just don't do well with that. But, but I, I like, I like everything that I've seen here that, as far as my understanding goes anyway, it's, it's, it seems great. So I appreciate, Nikki, I really appreciate your work and, and your skill set that you've brought to this. It, it's definitely been evident in all the meetings, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion?
I have, as a ex officio member, I'm going to deliberate. I just want to say that if there, if there is any hesitation because of, because of any changes in the information, I do think that because it's not tethered to any other project, giving the commission time to review the changes would simply just be a motion to table, a motion to amend. And, and then, and then looking at it again at another time, I'd rather, I would hope that the commission would see the value in, in postponing rather than voting it down.
Uh, Volk's also, please.
Make a new motion.
I, if somebody wanted to amend the motion to table, that would be a new motion, yeah.
I had my hand up. I had, I had my hand up, I'd like to amend. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. May I amend it?
You can make a motion to amend.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion.
In what way do you want?
Well, I, I do agree with, with the, with the mayor that I think that we should postpone this to our next planning commission meeting so that we can discuss it more and decide at that time if we want to make a motion to, to elevate that to the city council to recommend it.
Amendment is to postpone, to change the, the motion on the table to a postponement.
Yes.
I'll say.
And any discussion? Volk, please.
Chair Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Shapiro?
Commissioner Davis?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hazel?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMatto? Commissioner Volkart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Thank you very much. What else we got? So, thank you very much, Nikki. I, I, yeah, you've got a great skill set and, and being able to, to do, you know, like the right brain and the right, like, something like that is really great. I really love that. And so. Okay, so I think, I think the rest of the things, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Panama-Riff, did you?
Thanks, I just wanted, while we still have Nikki, Nikki here, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question when we talked about whether this means anything or not, whether it gets approved or incorporated. I had understood that, that for this, it's going back to the DLCD because they wrote the grant and they want to make sure they got their money worth from you, basically. Okay. But as far as this being a document that will be feeding into a, a housing capacity analysis, we need to adopt the building lands inventory in some way, right? Either as part, as a, as a building block to that housing capacity analysis or in and of itself separately. But either way, it's not real until the city adopts it. Is that, is that a correct understanding or not?
It's, it's not going to be something that is used in an HCA if it has not been adopted as a component of the comprehensive plan designation.
So that's a necessary.
The comprehensive, sorry. So that step would be necessary. It's perfectly reasonable for commission to want to take additional time, knowing everything that we've heard tonight, to examine things more closely before they make a recommendation. I want the commission to know that I'm available for that. I'll request to go through Nick, but I'm available for, you know, additional clarifying questions. And in terms of what council will be, you know, looking to, to perhaps do, it, it would be, you know, as part of a direction to staff to begin a comprehensive plan amendment and adopting the BLI, the residential BLI at that time would, would be important for that process.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand a hundred percent, we do need to adopt this into the comprehensive plan prior or as part of our housing capacity analysis if we want to do a housing capacity analysis.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, I mean, Counselor. I'm glad, because I thought I had gotten it just flipped. I didn't, yeah, I thought it didn't matter because DLCD is doing the HCI, right? Or HCA, rather.
They may pay for it, but it's our city that has to do it.
Oh, I was under the impression they actually were going to do it themselves.
No, we're, no. Do our stuff.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If, in the event that, in the event that we have to adopt the HCA, that was information that no one understood in this room until just now. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows there is the opportunity to reconsider your motion. To postpone. Because it's not performative, not performative. And it would be Felicia that would have to reconsider her motion.
Counselor.
Thank you, Chair. I think that the commission still has to vote on the main motion. That was just the vote on the amendment.
That's true.
So I just want to make sure it leaves until that happens.
But then they have to, that was voting the amendment, now they have to vote on the main motion as amended.
Yes.
So we have, so we need another, we have to move.
We rely on fire and order to keep track of these things.
So, so someone has to move that.
Yeah, motion on the floor.
Would you like to move that, please?
Sorry, can I? I, I just wanted to, thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that in light of the new information, the mayor was suggesting that maybe the amendment be reconsidered. In other words, that you re-amend.
No, 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 don't make, no. It would just be a matter of the person who made the motion could reconsider her, her motion and, and make, make a motion to withdraw, or to make a motion to.
So to undo, to basically undo the.
Right.
Okay, so I can, I, I, I'm requesting to withdraw my motion?
No, Commissioner, Commissioner Hazel, can you hold on one second? Nikki has her hand up.
I just wanted to clarify that the buildable lands inventory would need to be adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, as part of a comprehensive plan amendment. Not as part, not to do with the HCA because that would come later on. The first step would be to adopt it as a comprehensive plan amendment component. And you can do that later when you decide to begin that process. Adopting it now is, you know, it, it's something that you can do. It provides DLCD with an understanding that you are moving towards an HCA. But it is not necessary to begin the HCA process because that would happen after the comprehensive plan amendment component. because that would happen after the comprehensive plan amendment component. Does that make more sense?
It doesn't, because what you're saying is, is that the comprehensive plan amendment is reliant on this buildable lands inventory. Did I understand you correctly?
So this would be a component of the comprehensive plan?
Necessary component, correct?
A necessary component, but it could be voted on later on to be adopted. You, you can do that later. You don't have to do that tonight. I just wanted to take the pressure off from that and make sure that I was clear about that. I know that helped a lot.
Counselor Klae, right?
Yeah, I think you're doing a very good job of explaining this, but it's still hurting my brain. Is there a recommendation from staff on what the best course of action forward would be? Because I'm hearing a lot of like, we can do this, but we could also do this at this time. Is there a best course of action or a normal course of action?
I, it, it, I would say that given the hesitation to make a recommendation this evening by Planning Commission, I would say that it is reasonable to table it and to examine it more closely and to make a recommendation one way or the other ahead of directing staff to engage in a comprehensive plan amendment.
Can we let the staff talk as well?
That was all. Yes, correct.
Hang on, Counselor Byers.
Um, I was just tracking with the original motion. When you come back to it next meeting, it sounds like there needs to be a caveat added to it when you're recommending it to council to adopt it as an amendment to the current comprehensive plan specifically. And what I'm hearing from Nikki as well, just for note for the next meeting.
Okay, got that, Nick? Counselor, Commissioner Shapiro.
I'd like to kind of go to the way it is because this is gonna be part of a comprehensive plan. Good idea to review it, what you planned on.
So we, so we still need to, we still need a motion?
No.
It's good.
You're voting on it as an amendment.
Motion on the floor says, talk about it at your next meeting.
So we're done?
No, now you have to vote on that.
It's on the floor.
No, you voted on the amendment, but now you have to vote on the amended motion.
But we don't need another motion, we just vote on it.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Volcar, vote please.
Chair Riley?
I think yes.
All right, Vice Chair Shapiro, okay then. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I can hardly hear people. Yes and yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Klar?
Yes.
Can I, can I make one, one, one request, Madam Chair? Yeah, I, I think it's important to say at this point that we could have gotten through this probably this evening. We'd have the slide deck in the packet. And so I'm, I'm gonna ask staff to make sure that the packet is prepared and sent to the commission in, in, in the same timeframe as the agenda is sent out.
Seven, we're supposed to get it seven days before the meeting. Is there any, any more comp?
I was just gonna add that, so there was a link that, Nick, you sent out a link in an email. There were like, you could get in your, into your browser, there were like five tabs. The one you couldn't get into was the interactive one because you need to log in, you have to go to, Nick, that's for Nikki. We can't get, we're not supposed to.
You can now. You can now. I apologize for that. It was a, it was a share setting that I missed on one component of it, and it blew the whole thing up, and as soon as I found out, I fixed it. But that was entirely my fault.
I just want to tell people on the phone, the reason I said we couldn't do it is you were making a, a slash across your throat.
Yeah, this is me, it was my fault. That, that was me.
The other tabs were accepted. Anyway, so in addition to the packet, there, there is that interaction.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, are there any other requirements, Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you, Chair. I just would like to just make a bit of a note that if there's a recommendation that is going to be on an agenda, I would prefer to not have a joint planning and council meeting because it feels a little weird sitting here while the commission has to deliberate on a recommendation that's then going to be coming to us. So that, I think, would probably just be a best practice for next time. If this was a study session, I think that would be different.
Yeah, the, the, the way that the grant was written and the scope of work, it was two joint meetings, so.
Totally.
I, I think the larger point is that the two joint sessions should be study sessions, and there could be a decision on the table. Because we, yeah, I mean, I, I spoke during deliberation because I'm an ex officio, but for the council to be sitting in the middle of deliberation is, was, I think it's a larger point. Am I right, and you come for Perry Miller?
Yeah, it's just, you know, time is short, I get it. But just for next time, which I know this is the last meeting of this kind.
So we don't have any subcommittees, don't need to go see the city council. I think they've seen enough of us, and, and I think we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.